For your viewing pleasure, this broadcast of the Municipal Council Meeting of Alpena is made possible by the funding provided by the City of Alpena. Thank you for your generosity.
Good evening and welcome to the Alpena City Council Meeting, May 6, 2013. Call the order, please.
Iler.
Here.
Nielsen.
Here.
Noah.
Here.
Sexton.
Here.
Walagora.
Here.
Raise your flag.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the routine of justice and law.
Everyone had an opportunity to read over the minutes from regular session April 15, 2013, and special session April 20, 2013, and closed session April 20, 2013. Any modifications to the agenda this evening? Citizens appearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items shall be allowed five minutes each to address their concerns. If you do so, please come to the podium and state your name and address for our records.
Hello, Lori Stefan, 536 Brentwood, and I'm here to represent the Huron Humane Society as the current president, and I just ask that you please keep us on your budget for the same amount as last year. It seems like every time we get a little bit ahead, we get a little further behind. Lots of drop off still, lots of strays, but hoping for a successful season. Just ask that you remember us in your budget.
Awesome. Thank you, Lori. Sit. Any announcements this evening?
Yes, I do have one. This is a announcement that I passed out to council before the meeting, but I'll read it. Joel Jett has been serving as the city's interim police chief since June of 2011. During that time, he has demonstrated excellent leadership, knowledge, and professionalism during challenging times for both the department and the city. At this time, I am pleased to announce that Joel has agreed to drop the interim title and accept the petition for the position, not the petition, position of permanent police chief for the City of Alpena effective May 14 of 2013. Chief Jett has served on the city police department for 22 and a half years, moving up through the ranks from patrolman, patrol sergeant, sergeant detective, interim police chief, and now police chief. I look forward to continuing the close and productive working relationship that developed while we were both in our interim positions. I wish him the best of success in the years ahead. I do have a copy of this.
Thank you very much. Awesome. (Applause) Please.
Well, pop yourself out of it.
I just wanted to say, and I didn't prepare a speech, which I'm shocked at that, but you know, in times, you hear people say that it's been a privilege, it's been an honor, and often cliches, and I just want to say, in my case, it truly has been. And my decision to accept this was based in no small part by the quality people that I work with, with the council, the officers that serve this community, and in very large part, the recent decision to appoint Greg Sundin as the city manager. I looked at that and I thought, how can I lose? So, I looked around at people, I mean, I thought, you know, I'd like to stay. So, I just want to say thank you for having the confidence in me, and I look forward again to representing this department and this community for many, many years. So, thank you again.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, chief. Consent agenda, bills to be allowed, and one city council reappointment to the City of Alpena building authority for a three-year term requiring 3/19/2016, Greg Sundin.
Remove excepted consent as Jimdez proposed.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Iler?
Yes.
Okay, I have a proclamation this evening. Older Americans Month. Whereas Alpena, Michigan includes a number of, a large number of citizens aged 60 and older, and whereas Alpena, Michigan is committed to valuing all individuals and recognizing their ongoing life achievements, and whereas the older adults in Alpena, Michigan play an important role by continuing to contribute experience, knowledge, wisdom, and accomplishments, and whereas our older adults are active community members involved in volunteering mentorship, arts and culture, and civic engagement, and whereas recognizing the successes of community elders encourages their ongoing participation and further accomplishments, whereas our community can provide opportunities to allow older citizens to continue to flourish by presenting opportunities for older Americans to share their wisdom, experience, and skills, recognizing older adults as a valuable asset, and strengthening American communities. Now therefore, I, Matthew J. Walagora, by the virtue of authority vested in me as mayor of City of Alpena, do hereby proclaim May of 2013 to be Older Americans Month in Alpena and urge every citizen to take time this month to recognize older adults and people who serve and support them as powerful and vital citizens who greatly contribute to the community. Sign today.
You couldn't resist. Are you accepting on behalf?
We didn't do that one.
Was I supposed to present that?
Couldn't left it.
All right. Report of officers, we have a city manager agreement.
The council has in its packet the proposed agreement between the City of Alpena and Greg Sundin. There are just a couple provisions that the memorandum lays out. One, consistent with Greg's request at the time of interview, the salary laid out in the proposed contract is for $90,000, essentially halfway between the $80,000 to $100,000 that council set during the interview process. Second, regarding the termination clause, the language is identical to previous contracts, consistent with our consultant's statement to council that six months is the standard in the industry. Mr. Sundin requested six months, and so that wasn't unusual during the negotiation that he was going to request that. I think it's fair in light of the circumstance that he finds himself in, which is that he will be leaving the position of planning and development director, which was subject only to the city manager's approval, whereas the city manager contract is subject to council approval. So, if council decided that it no longer wished to employ him in the future, you know, it would be able to do so without cause, then that termination clause would kick in. So, the fact that he's giving up his position as planning and development director as part of this agreement, I think that's reasonable. Just a couple other minor changes. Greg asked that there be a shortened time for any intent to terminate the contract on his part, meaning if he wanted to resign, give 30 days' notice. I don't think he intends to resign anytime soon, but that was one minor change. And then also, we did add one other provision, and that was that he would have to use some fleet vehicle prior to travel when it's available, which is also consistent with council policy and what we've done in the past. If for some reason a vehicle wasn't available and he had to use his own personal vehicle, he would be allowed for reimbursement of mileage, just like anybody else on behalf of the city that's doing city business. So, the agreement is pretty consistent with what was presented to council before as a draft, and so I'm asking that council consider this, and if you approve it, then you'd ratify it, and you would effectively officially become city manager as of May 6 of this year.
Quick question.
Yep.
Essential duties, added to directly supervise the city building inspector. What was that before? Or is he just running wild?
Which one are you under? I want to make sure.
Oh, never mind.
Okay.
Could have been saying that.
It's like you were like you had something.
That's fine, that means.
Okay.
Yeah, I was in the wrong.
Yeah. Threw me, bro.
Like you didn't type that, did you?
Greg will be, and he'll also address the last portion that was added to his, to his contract, being the filling in his previous position.
Yeah, I'm sorry, there was one additional provision, that's correct, Mayor. Greg wanted the council to move forward with that. I think the general understanding was that the council was going to immediately move forward with finding the planning and development director, but Greg did ask that that specifically be put into the agreement, and I think it's consistent with what council already announced that he intended to do, so I didn't think that was any hindrance to the agreement.
No.
Remove approval of the city manager agreement.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Iler?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Congratulations, Greg.
Thank you.
All right. And now being... We're going to take that position part another time with the plan. Did you have something?
Otherwise, I can just, as far as just an update, I presented the council the additions to the job descriptions for the planning and development director. There are some roles that are currently under that position that I'm going to retain as the city manager, at least for the time being, perhaps, probably, I don't know, but one is the, being the city representative on the Thunder Bay Transportation Authority, the other is the executive director of Brownfield Authority, and then being the principal contact or primary person involved with the economic development, though certainly any new person coming in will be definitely involved in that as well. I did at least propose to eliminate that, or remove as part of the planning responsibility is the oversight of the building department, which consists of the building official and the building inspector, and then for some moving around of duties. And that also, there is a suggested change in the payroll structure as well, based on that, and just ask you to review the documents. If you have any comments, let me know in the next couple of days, because we'd like to look at posting this, if not yet this week, early next week, and get that process moving.
So, that doesn't, none of these changes would take council action?
No, no, they're, I just basically...
You're just giving us some input.
And if you do see something or have any questions, you know, feel free to contact me by phone or email.
Okay. We'll take some time later to swallow that.
Right, it's nothing that's asking for a decision or anything.
All right, that's what I was afraid of when I saw it. I wasn't sure if we had to take some action.
No.
Okay. All right, the 2013-14 budget.
Okay. I'm not going to follow the memo exactly, but I will try to highlight some of the areas. The general fund is the operating fund for the city. It includes the parks, the DPW, the cemetery, police, EMS, IT, and city hall. It does not include streets or water and sewer. And I'll summarize our projections for the general fund, and I believe I gave you a copy. For the current fiscal year, we came in with an over $3 million fund balance. We purposely tried to stay high because we didn't know how personal property taxes would play out, how much revenue we might lose. And if you'll notice, on the current year, we originally budgeted about $830,000 that we would take from fund balance, but we've got that down to $457,000, and we're confident that that will probably come even better than that. We're going to look at the end of the year, fund balance of $2.6 million, a little bit over that, or 29.11% fund balance. Once we take away a few of the items that we have to set aside that we can't spend, or they're specific to something else, like the capital in the information technology department, we're down to $2.383 million, or 26.3%. So, that's how we're going to end up this year, we hope. I think we'll stay even a little bit better than that. Then, so then next year, we'll go in with that $2.6 million, designated and undesignated. Looks like we're going to spend about $666,000 more than we have in revenue. Again, though, we think if we come in better at the end of this year, that will work and give us a better standing next year. That ends up to be about 21.54%, a little bit still above the 20% that council requests. Once we take out the designated amounts again, we're down to 1.765 million, or 19.28%. And we did something a little different this year. We added on another projected year, 14-15. I'm not concentrating on that too much the first year, just because we didn't get a chance to really analyze it, but everybody put that together, and then we'll try to even project it out another year, just to give us a little bit of an idea of what's happening in the future. It's very difficult, as you know, we have so many unknowns, so it's difficult to look into the future too far, but maybe that will help us plan a little better, so. Also included in next year's budget, we have $40,000 for Target, $14,000 for the Humane Society, and $7,500 for Hunt. I think Hunt was the only one that asked for more. I want to say they asked for $14,000 or $15,000, but we approved $7,500 in the budget, plus we're giving them an officer. So, that is included in the budget this year.
For this year?
For this, I'm sorry, for 14, 13, 14.
13, 14.
And when I say, I mean next year, starting July 1.
Okay.
Yeah, there's lots of next year this year. In those small, I think I mentioned this before, there are positive signs of economic turnaround. The 13-14 property tax values didn't decrease quite as sharply as we first thought. For 12-13, the tax revenue is projected to be about $214,000 less than 2011-12, which was quite a hit. This 13-14 fiscal year, starting July 1, it's probably going to only drop about $31,000, $31,000. So, we thought we may end up getting another $200,000 decrease in tax revenue, and we're not, so that's, that's good news. The pension plan funding level increased from an all-time low of 92.1% to 92.4. That's very small, but it is an increase, so that's, that's a good sign. The city's required contribution to the pension plan decreased $25,000, so that's another good sign. We received $15,268 more in state revenue through our EVIP, economic from the state, the payments rose a tiny bit, so a little bit of positive news that we have going into next year. And as you know, the current policy, number 55, the fund balance policy, government fund, states that when the fund balance approaches the maximum threshold, the following measures would be considered. We would first fully fund the pension plan. We are already doing that. Fully fund the OPEB, which is Other Post-Employment Benefits, annual required contributions. That's our post-retirement healthcare, and that's so that we have enough money to pay for the healthcare of the retirees, and all of us that are going to retire that do have that benefit. We are woefully underfunded on that, so that would have to be our next priority. About $4.5 million underfunded. So, we've got about $500,000 in that savings, and then after that, it's a page ago. And then we would accelerate capital improvements in the CIP. This year with the budget, we really tried to balance out and tried to do some capital, because as you know, we have to, we have to start doing capital.
What's the difference between making capital improvements and exhilarating capital improvements? Because, is that enough, or should I explain what I mean? Do you know what I mean?
Yes.
Okay.
Accelerate them means right now, we do the bare minimum. Accelerating means bring some more of them in our, from our capital plan that we have, bring a few more forward, and try to get ahead on some of our infrastructure needs. Is that what you meant?
Yeah, because, because we always seem to be, since I've, since I've been here, we push, we push things, and so is bringing something that we pushed into the future back considered an exhilaration if we had moved it in the first place?
Yeah, we would speed it up. We'd bring it back and...
So, that even if it were, even if it were something that was in the CIP years ago, but we've pushed it out ahead, if we were to bring it back, it would, it would now be an exhilaration?
Yeah, we would try to, yes.
So, we wouldn't be able to do that until we did one and two?
Well, one is, we do fund one as we are required. Two, we could split that even if you wanted, as far as, in two, we're doing about 2% of payroll right now. You know, maybe we could do 4% of payroll, and then we could say, we're going to spend another $200,000 on capital.
Okay, so it's a priority thing?
Right. This is the priorities that you said.
We don't have to completely, fully fund the OPEB before we can exhilarate, so...
Yeah, you couldn't with that $4.5 million.
Never be there. Okay.
And on the CIP, as you know, we go through it each year, the number of projects versus how much money there is to spend on it.
Right.
There's always a big discrepancy, even in good times, let alone the last few years. What we would be doing with the city engineer, or whoever, you know, projects are with, is that we would be looking at priority projects that we could move up, and sometimes that happens too, is if grant funding becomes available, we'll move them up, but even otherwise, the idea would be if we're spending half a million dollars on capital improvements now is to increase that to maybe, you know, 3/4 of a million or whatever, because we have fallen behind, and we're just trying to accelerate some of those projects to try to begin to catch up, because of having to put off more and more projects because of lack of funding. It's going to be a slow process. It isn't going to happen overnight. It'll take several years, but we need to hopefully start that process as revenues begin to, hopefully, and as, you know, indicated by what looks like, and we hope is a bottoming out of the property tax trough, that that will begin to turn and begin to climb again. That will help tremendously.
I guess my only question, actually, I have lots of them, as you probably guessed, but my first question then would be, I guess, to both of you is, in your opinion, and I'm asking for an opinion, even though it's a policy that if we're more than 20, that we start working on some capital improvements, are there a lot of unknowns in the revenue, funding and stuff, that would be, you know, would it be better for us to leave it at the 26.30%? To have a little bit more in that account in case the unknowns come up, like funding shortcuts and so on?
Unfortunately, there are still two or three large unknowns, healthcare, personal property taxes. So, I did request at the end of the memo not to rush to reduce that yet. Let's try to get through it another couple of years. We had to do that with a number of different things, when state revenue sharing was iffy, then we lost our property tax value, you know, and maybe Jeff will have a better idea next year, so we still have a ways to go before we want to get down to that 15 or 10%.
We already know, beginning in January of next year, we're going to lose close to about $50,000, $49,500 in personal property tax under the law, where the small businesses that have taxable value of personal property of $40,000 or less simply become exempt from personal property. And that's going to affect us around $49,500, so we know that. But depending about how that law works its way through in terms of its implementation, what the vote is in August of 2014 that's required of the, of the public to change the constitution, on how the use tax is used, that it could be used towards reimbursing for loss, personal property tax, how that comes out, we don't really know. As I said the other night at the forum, if you have the perfect storm, we could be hit very, very hard, that the voters approve the tax, but if the special assessment, the essential services assessment, which is to reimburse us basically 100% for public safety, that portion of personal property tax that would go towards public safety, if that's declared unconstitutional, and there are some who believe it is not legal, that could cost us dearly, because that personal property tax reform is still on the books, although a whole section of it is not valid. Then we're, as I said the other night, we've already gone through the fat, we've gone through pretty much the meat, we're going to be going right in the bone, and that's what we just don't know. And so, to go out and spend the fund balance with those uncertainties would not be prudent. We know, at least I'm very confident, that with the changes in our healthcare, we are going to have some pretty sizable savings this year, but that doesn't mean they're going to be there the following year. And we still don't know the impact of the Federal Affordable Healthcare Act, of how affordable it's going to be for us or employees, so there's a lot of unknowns there. We really don't want to take too big of a leap until some of these things begin to become a little more focused, and we know what the, what's in store. There are a couple other things that I wanted to mention. One was healthcare, that we have, for the first time ever, we're going through a cafeteria plan, which offers three options, and at least on the estimates, based on the premium that we've been provided by Blue Cross, that we'll, we should save at least about $100,000 this first year. Could be more than that, but it's hard to say. Depends which policies people actually sign up for. As I said, though, we don't know what happens in the second year, because we will have those policies set, and it will all depend upon what the increases are. And of course, we're trying to do everything we can to minimize those, and we'll continue to do that, but it is very much of an unknown. But this is the first time that we are doing that, and we think it will have a, you know, positive effect for the city. The other is, we are implementing the phase-in towards the employee paying 20% of the premiums. This coming year, starting with July, employees will pay 12.5% of the premium. And then next year, it'll go to 15, the following year to 17.5, and then finally, after four years, it will be 20. Now, again, we don't know what the federal law is going to do on those premium payments, because the federal law does have a limitation on a percent of the household income that can be spent on, I think, the healthcare premiums. So, if that, if the 20% exceeds that, we may end up having to adjust some people's premiums accordingly. And again, those are unknowns, we're not totally sure of, and we're just going to have to watch. We don't see that happening for two or three years, where that could come into play. Hopefully by then, it will all be clear in terms of what that impact is, what it is there. The other thing I wanted to bring up is not in the budget, but the council has considered it, and the city has certainly done it in the past, and I just wanted to bring it to your attention, if it is indeed a priority for council, we would have to, you know, do some reconfiguring on the budget. But we received two inquiries as to whether the city was interested in buying property. One of them is the Beach Motel, which is right there, south of the Kentucky Fried Chicken, right there, adjacent to Starlight Beach. It was for sale a couple of years ago, I believe, Jeff, that motel, was it? Is that a difference?
We were trying to buy it.
We were trying to buy it, and at that time, they apparently weren't interested. Now they are putting it up for sale, and have asked us if we're interested before, they put it on the market to purchase it. Probably, if this is five, six, seven years ago, I would have probably been sitting here saying, yes, we should probably consider it. The thing is, is by one, we'd have to purchase it. It's considered to have, I think, a two cash value of, you know, over $146,000, then you have the cost of demolition, because we'd have to do something with that. And if it's like the last motel that we bought, we ended up also finding there was an underground storage tank that added further cost to us to remove. And so, I'm not sure that, though, property values and sale prices, I certainly had a good time to be purchasing for the budget, I don't think it is necessarily that opportune time. The other is 148 state avenue. That is, there's the three houses right in front of the van shelf, and the city has always talked about purchasing those. This is the middle house. And the city has always talked about purchasing those. This is the middle house. Of course. And again, the issue is you buy it, what do you do with it? We can't just let these vacant. I don't think the city wants to be a landlord and be renting property. So then, and it's really not a house you can move. It's a, these are some taller homes. You've got all the power lines that I'm not even sure if we have. There is a vacant lot across the street, but I know it's owned by somebody. I don't know if it's one of the adjacent properties and they may have no interest in putting a home there or even if it's somebody else. So relocating the house is probably not a very viable option. So again, you have the cost of removing a structure on top of the cost of purchasing. And it might be a little more desirable if it was one of the end homes, but being right in the middle, I know you have to start somewhere. But again, I think with the way the budget is, my recommendation would be not to move ahead with that. But I did want to bring it to your attention. So if, if it is a priority of the council, then we would have to just look at adjusting the budget accordingly.
I guess I would ask, as far as the beach goes, yeah, it is part of our master plan to buy, you know, those types of properties. We have invested, you know, in the Starlight next door. At least I'd be curious as to how we can pay for it and just some basic numbers of-
If we purchase the house?
Oh, no, the beach motel.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. It would, it'd be a finance. I'd do a 10-year or 15-year finance on it. Because we don't really have those lump sums like we used to be able to do that with.
No, we get low interest rate and we're going rate, huh?
Probably not.
Probably not.
Probably not.
Just because the going rates are recently-
Yeah. I mean, I, we, I would think we would do a bid on it. Like, we, we did that one other time on financing bid and three or four different banks bid on it. It was a good grade. I can't remember exactly what it was, but it would be a low rate, just not real, real low. That's how I would-
Rich, do you remember when we demolished the other motel, what roughly, what kind of expenses we had involved with that?
It was $11,500.
For the, for the motel?
That was the demo. I don't know what much cost of the tank, but yeah, the demo was $11,500.
Because that was what? How many years ago?
Ten. But it was, that was the low bids, it was Great Lakes. But then the other bids were anywhere from, someone was high at $35,000.
You know, I would just throw out this, to at least consider it. But that hits, you know, the market, who knows what use that's going to be. And it is adjacent to, you know, our park system. Who weren't thinking about it?
We, I don't, they've been in contact with Jeff. I don't know, did they ever give you any price?
No, they did offer great terms. They says they don't need a lot of money right now. They could do a small down payment and a bank contract.
Well, we could do some, have Jeff do some investigating on what they are asking and what kind of terms they'd be looking at and bring that back certainly for discussion before we move the budget at the next meeting.
Can we move the house? What, it could be moved?
The whole motel? I don't think you'd be moving. No, no, the motel, you're not going to move.
All right.
That will be a definite demolition.
Karen, can I ask for something or you want to keep that?
No, no, go ahead.
I just wanted to make sure we kind of hear the fund balance numbers the same way across the board.
Okay.
When you talk about projecting 29%, this year 21% next year, right? That before or after we pay back what we owe from the year before? Know what I mean? Like when we're short this year, how we use the fund balance to pay it off and then move forward?
Yes.
So do those numbers count paying that back already or not?
The 26.3 is after, at, at the end of this year, we'll have 26.3 after all of the extra expense has been taken out of it and all the designated amount has been set aside. So 26.3, that's pretty healthy. And then next year, 19.28 is after that 660, 6,000 expenses overrun that's been taken out. Yeah.
Just making sure it was, the real fund balance wasn't really-
Yes. It gets confusing because part of it has to be set aside. When the auditors come, they'll just give you the whole fund balance. But there is a little bit that's designated that you have to take out.
So maybe give a, just a quick explanation of how we're able to have a fund balance as high as we do, considering, you know, the constraints that we have. To start out, 29 is, seems pretty-
Well, unfortunately, the capital, we've pushed and pushed and pushed away.
A lot.
So now we have to bring back that. Obviously, the roads, we tried to keep a couple of roads in the budget this year. Some of our buildings, we can't take in Marina buildings, take care of those. So we've pushed that aside as much as we can. And then you can only do that so long. So we're trying to put that back in. The other thing is, when we came in with that $3 million fund balance at the beginning of this year, part of that was because we made more in the ambulance fund than we had budgeted. We made, we brought more in from the state revenue than we thought and I think property taxes was the other one. So we brought in two, about $400,000 or $500,000 more than we had budgeted. And then our expenses, we had cut. I think the mishta came in about $150,000 less. So our expenses, we kept down and we brought in quite a bit more revenue. So we were able to come in with a really healthy fund balance this time.
And typically, each department comes in a little under budget as well, right?
Everybody watches their budgets. It's difficult. Over time, you don't know. You know, you don't know if people are going to be sick or there's going to be extra events like this year. The police are going to have some extra events. So that's going to cause more overtime.
So, so even though the policy 55 says that we should budget for a, not to exceed 20% fund balance, we budget and are comfortable budgeting for higher, would it be safe to say because you don't really know what's going to happen within that year with, with EBIT and, and-
Very unusually, no. It would be, it would be, we would be in trouble if we tried, if we took down like, say, even 5% and went under 20. And then all of a sudden, the personal property is not going to be reimbursed at all.
So the policy was written when things were more stable and you kind of knew what was going to happen?
And we didn't want to sit on that 20, we didn't want to sit up there at 25 or 30 and have all these capital projects that we weren't doing.
Right.
But there's still so many unknowns. I think, I do think we'll know in the next two or three years. Like Greg said, next year is the vote on the personal property tax. We'll have that answer. Healthcare starts in 2014, so maybe we'll have that answer.
Well, I know that since I've been here, our fund balance is always higher than what we project. So I appreciate that that's always the surprise and that we're around.
That's what we're worried about, yes.
We get to, and add a bit up with that.
And I look back at the history and every year, you know, when we budget, we usually always come in better than we had hoped. So if we keep that trend. There were years when we cut so much that the poor department has, we cut so tight that we had to do budget amendments constantly. So we tried not to do that either.
We would much rather be on the side of caution, budgeting it a bit higher. So if something does happen-
We're ready.
The funds are there, rather than going in and like I say, cutting to the bone and then we're having to make major amendments and taking out of whatever fund balance and budgeting that, that really go down even more drastically.
Before the vote on personal property taxes, are they going to clarify how they're going to make communities whole? Or is that totally just been pushed out of the equation?
Well, I did ask Representative, I had a question regarding a portion of that and how it affected groundfields as well, which is still, all the tips on that are really an unknown. There's on that, that, those things, but nothing has happened yet. And like the question of the constitutionality of the essential services assessment, is it legal or not? At least what I'm hearing is that may not actually come to the forefront till after the vote. Because if that's there and if things move forward, because a lot of those occur where they begin to remove from the personal property tax, I believe it's 2016 is the main date for like industrial and commercial properties, that, that's likely, or once they implement, that somebody may challenge. Is when they get that special assessment, somebody puts it in place and then they say, somebody challenges and says, "That's not legal." And that is very much a question mark. And if it was declared unconstitutional, then we have a real problem.
And another good reason to leave the fund balance higher if we can right now too, is if something did fall out, like the personal property, the floor fell out, we'd have time to make some plans, you know, a year, year and a half to make some plans. And it would be drastic if we lost the whole $600,000 approximately.
I would assume that the worst-case scenario, we would probably lose 3 to 350. Because if the vote doesn't go through, then we go back to what it was. There is no personal property tax reform and it just goes, continues as it was. If that does pass, then it's the other half, that essential services assessment. That becomes the concern and whether or not that is, you know, is considered legal. And then just the process of putting it in place is a little, is still fuzzy with, under the law, under the legislation that's been passed. So we'd have to see how that all shakes out.
I, I don't, I don't see an issue with, with what you've proposed as far as, as far as what we spend in the fund balance and what we leave. I, I do have a couple of questions about what we've spent on capital improvements. And I know we have a capital improvement meeting and we went through quite a bit of this. But if we're going to spend so little on capital improvements, I'd like to make sure that we've got something in there that people can feel and see that we're, we're doing, you know, we're upgrading things that, that desperately need to be done. And one of the things that have been brought to my attention in Ridge's here is, is the overwhelming amount of sidewalks that are, either portions of them are missing or they haven't been established. So I don't, I don't know if there's, there's sidewalk in here. There's, between new and replaced, there's $18,000 worth of sidewalk in here. Maybe if you could just give me a reminder on what, what exactly that, what's that going to cover?
Basically, the, excuse me, replacement sidewalk is the voluntary program where folks sign up for sidewalk installation or we participate in replacing sections of sidewalk that are torn up during utilities. If they're in poor shape, we participate with them. New sidewalk is the same thing. Folks requesting new sidewalk be installed. The sub precinct sidewalk program that we had a number of years ago is, was basically put on hiatus because of funding availability. We had completed roughly 65 to 70% of the city. There were still some areas that we had to get to and get finished up. But through the funding we needed, I mean, we were into the point where we were into the $200,000, $250,000 a year is what we had targeted to complete that program. And there was no way that we could continue that. The last year that we did do it, we included $150,000 to basically finish up an area that we had started. And then we did not start any new areas. So it is one that goes into the CIP, it just never makes the cut.
So these are, these totals are here in the event that, that residents take part in the sidewalk program?
That's about what we spend every year as far as participation with folks on sidewalk replacement programs or new sidewalk installations. It's pretty close to what our trend is spending.
Okay. And then there was while you're, while you're here, and I don't mean to target you-
No, no, no.
You weren't prepared, but the tandem axle dump truck, I, there's 180 in the CIP for 2013, '14. But I, did we, we just bought one. Were there two in the original, one for each year?
Yes.
Okay. Because when I saw it, I knew we just purchased one, but I wasn't sure of that.
And just so council's aware too, those equipment purchases like that do not come out of the general fund. Those are funded out of the rental rates that we pay back to the equipment fund. Karen and I worked on that in the past. We targeted about $250,000. This year, due to declining revenues, we had dropped that to $200,000 was what we targeted for that. We're a little over that this year, what we were under last year, what we spent, so.
So you rent your own equipment?
Yes. We purchase all the equipment and we charge. Basically, what happens is Michigan Department of Transportation issues an equipment rental schedule. We, that's what we can charge back to them, back to MDO when we're doing maintenance. We use that for all of our equipment. If they're used in the parks, the Parks Fund rents them. If they're used at any other location, that particular fund pays the equipment fund for the rental of that equipment. What that does is that perpetuates that program. So we do have the money to be able to go back in and replace that equipment when it does wear out.
And you'll notice that in your budget, it says equipment rent. In many of the departments, that's what that is.
Well, you're up there.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Might as well sit here.
No, no.
On the third and River Park-
You might as well, I think, as Rich is trying to check that off.
Obviously, if we put 100 grand into it and then they build the plaza, it's going to through that much away. If we were to wait a few years to see if the plaza comes through and it doesn't, and two or three years go by, are we going to have the same basic expense there? Or is it going to be exponentially bigger because we let it go? You know what I mean?
You're probably not going to spend a whole lot more other than what the increase in construction costs or material costs are going to be. The bigger concern is the present condition of that parking lot. One trip and fall, one slip and fall, one accident in there is going to cost us well over $100,000. And that's what we want to try and prevent. It's in such poor condition and the volume of use that it gets, we're going to get a lot of bang for our buck out of that. And we're not going to go in and make, do a premium job. $100,000, probably pretty heavy. We've, we've been looking at the estimates. It's going to come in under that. But basically, what we're going to do is we're going to rip out some of the concrete curb that's in poor condition and just pave it basically up to the spack of the sidewalk line. It's not, it's not going to be aesthetically pleasing. It's going to be a slab of asphalt. Bare minimum effort put into there. And this is not something in common. A number of years ago, Third Avenue was in just absolutely deplorable condition. We couldn't, we didn't have the funding to be able to undertake the utility replacements. In that case, we put a Band-Aid on it, an overlay, to try to buy us seven years. That Band-Aid ended up lasting us 11 years before we had the funding to do it. So it, it is something. And that's more or less what this is. It's a Band-Aid to protect us from a liability issue.
So you can live with it if we do it and then they turn around and go, "Please?"
Even, I mean, Sean, even if we, we banged the gavel tonight and said, "The plaza is a great idea. Let's proceed forward with it," you're probably not going to go.
It's still a couple of years.
It's going to be, it's going to be, these three years off, by the time we find the funding, get the design work done, get all the elements incorporated, three years of equipment, I would think.
And just to let that lot continue to deteriorate all that time is just not for, for the safety of those who use it and, and just for our downtown. But when we have visitors and they come, they have a parking lot that is in that bad a shape. I mean, I was walking through it and I started to walk between two cars and I wasn't sure how the driver got out of the one car because the puddle was this deep because of the way the surface had sunk in that area. And it was just a large puddle. And of course, in the winter, that same thing is going to be a sheet of ice, which is also a hazard in itself. So we're just looking at it for, for those who use it, for their safety, as well as just the, you know, in terms of how people view our downtown and, and the quality of the infrastructure that we have. I don't think that we can let that sit for another three years. This was originally looked at to have been done two or three years ago and we've continually put it off. To now do that for another three years to see if a plaza may or may not be built, I, I do not think would be good.
And if there is, and the target being is if there is funding left out of that $100,000, the intention is to go over and do some patching work on the Lockwood, the two parking lots off of Lockwood, because those are in as bad, if not worse, condition.
I drove in the one closest to, between Lockwood and Chisholm. That's another one that definitely needs attention.
That's the better of the two.
Yeah, I wasn't in the other.
Rich, maybe it was an unfortunate metaphor, but I think of $100,000 Band-Aid and the cost of healthcare and it didn't seem like it was something we want to pay for. Here, here's my band, my bandwagon to get on for, a couple of years ago, remember? We ripped up Washington Avenue from Ripley to- from Ripley to Potter and put in new gas lines and new street and new curbs and after the explosion, new sidewalks too. But during the time that the street was essentially gravel and the big trucks were driving in empty and driving out full and that sort of thing, they were driving on these little streets like Potter and Kavanaugh and Fifth and Campbell. Campbell was a little street, but they were, they were coming out that way. Is there anything in this budget to repair that? The first hundred, a hundred and fifty feet of those, of those streets looked like a war zone.
What we can do, we've got seventy-five thousand in our local street program and that's what it's targeted for, targeted for. It is, is those types of streets. But, you know, and I don't remember which council member said it, but they really want, they wanted to see something that would impact the public. Probably about eight, nine years ago, the, the city did almost seventy-five blocks of resurfacing in one year. It was, it was about four hundred and seventy-five, it was just thin overlay resurfacing. We started off, I think, with four seventy-five and we actually put a few more dollars into it as we got going. Those are the types of projects that will extend the life of our street as maximum impact and is very visible to the public. They see those, those dollars being spent. And, you know, every year we put more money in for the thin overlay resurfacing to do those types of projects. They're Band-Aids, but with our streets, a lot of them are twenty-five years old and they're, they've held up well. If we can put a Band-Aid on them, we can get another ten to fifteen out of them easily. So those are the types of things we wanna, we wanna try to target, but yes, we do have money for those.
Okay, good. May I continue?
Please.
While we're on the subject of streets, we've got both a sewer and a water project on Grant Street, which is a fairly important street. Together about three hundred and seventy-five thousand or whatever. When the sewer and water situation's taken care of and the road is rebuilt, I assume the shoulder will be taken care of too because there isn't much of it left in, in parts of Grant Street.
And what that is, the city also has a, next year has a project that's funded by a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars from Michigan Department of Transportation. It's not next year's budget, it's the following year. It's about an eight hundred thousand dollar project. We've been bankrolling money to do Grant Street from Brook to Hobbs Drive. The, the two blocks of sanitary sewer and water are between.
Brook and.
Brook and, there's two or three streets back, I can't remember the next one. No, back further.
Oh, toward.
Yeah, towards town, towards Grant Street or Ripley Street.
The forest or something.
Yeah, so, though, you know, we wanna do that first, so that, otherwise we're gonna have a two-block section of street that isn't gonna get rebuilt in the middle there. So that, that's what that was targeted. And actually, that was supposed to be done this year. We had to back it off till next year because of funding available down in downtown.
Thanks.
I'm just curious on the one two, the, I'm assuming I have the answer, the paper replacement brick savers, if that's all downtown?
Well, it is, yeah. In the downtown, the old, the old section, the original section of downtown streets that was done, basically from the bridge to Chisholm Street, was done over twenty years ago. Brick pavers were not real good quality, like they are today. They didn't have the ceiling out of them like, like they do now. And we had a lot of those bricks just basically crumble. The surface would start to flake off of them. All around Colligan Plaza and through downtown, there's another those locations. And, and we've actually done this probably three to four years ago. It's, it's been a project that has been put into the budget, usually doesn't happen because of budget constraints. You know, we, we end up cutting it. But we have done it in a number of locations. Before, we replaced them with stenciled colored concrete in a number of areas. Last year, we, because of a situation that arose, we were able to just, over the Old Town side, pull the bricks out and have them relayed. They were still in good condition, we could relay them. So if that's the case, we will do that. The other thing that's come up, and we informed Greg of that today, is that with the Michigan Department of Transportation work that's happening up and down Chisholm Street along State Street, in the downtown section, there are a number of areas where they, the sidewalk they're taking out of butts or impacts that, those brick pavers. They're pulling them out, they're not gonna replace them. We want them replaced, we can either replace them or they'll put them in in concrete, they'll just concrete it in. So right now, what we've asked to do is just set the bricks aside and we will work to get those reinstalled. But that's where some of that money's gonna go.
Excellent.
You look like you're ready to pose a question.
It's kinda unrelated, but we don't have any supervisory input on twenty-three, the state's doing, right?
Yeah.
So you can't come along and say, hey, don't do this or that.
That was, that was already, it was within their right of way. When we did those improvements, it was under a permit issued by the Department of Transportation. And they can tear all, anything they want.
And they are?
Yes, they are.
One other thing that Karen just noticed, that's not in, in the CIP portion, capital projects, but it really is.
Not on here?
Yes, not on that sheet, is the Island Park Bridge. We had committed to put in roughly thirty thousand each year to cover certain costs like electrical and some other things towards that project. It is in the budget, it just, it didn't get put on the capital sheet, but that is there. And we will be doing that in conjunction with Mr. Kojewski's work on, on building that new bridge.
Where does that end up at, as a fund? What is, is that lighting?
Parks and Rec in the general fund. It's a park, it's considered one of ours. And he starts next year?
No, no, he's already started. And the other item that he talked about, the water tower, that is done. He's just got to, he's doing some final things to get it ready to where he can actually place it. And that, but the tank and the, and the whole thing, it's quite incredible what it's gonna look like. But I believe, I don't know if they've started bringing in any of the lumber for the.
They're giving the logs in the area by where the, the sign is for the Wildlife Sanctuary.
Riverside.
Riverside, I couldn't even, he's actually got some logs in there, he's starting to peel those. And those will sit out there at age for about a year. But he wanted to do it in a visible area so that people wanted to see how it, how it is constructed, they could stop down and see that.
Yeah, I think that the next thing will be, this year, the bridge that's there will be removed and then he'll be working on the, the abutment areas on both sides, on the island and then on the Duck Park side as well. And then for the next year, so, well, until they at least get the deck on, then they'll be able to, like over the winter, if they do get the deck on as they hope this year, then they'll be able to open that up for people to cross over to the island during the winter. And then, of course, next year, then they'll build the actual structure. There may be, again, limited or no access for a period of time. And the Wildlife Sanctuary Board has prepared for that and they're aware that that's will be, that that will occur.
Excellent. Budget-wise, where's, I just kinda wanna get a feel for where you guys are at. I, I, just, we intend to approve the budget at our next regular meeting?
We normally table it tonight, but I wanna, I wanna get as much discussion and questions answered as I can.
And we had a lot of time tonight, 'cause there was a little bit of talk about having a special meeting, having a workshop. But I knew we had a lot of time tonight, so I went ahead and let it go for, you know, the discussion and get some questions so we don't have to call a special meeting, we don't have to. I don't know if anybody still feels that we do, if you have, or if you have maybe any just general like questions, you can talk to Karen before the next meeting and then we'll have another discussion next meeting. Does, does our agenda look fairly similar?
It'll be busy.
But that's.
Yeah.
I mean.
It'll be whatever.
Yeah, it'll be.
I'd rather go long on a regular meeting than, 'cause our evening is, is, we're here, rather than hold a special meeting, so. Unless everybody's got any further questions tonight, then we'll table the, table the, the budget until our next meeting.
And I just wanted to say just a few other things that we're, you know, we would really be working on, like Greg combining those two positions. You know, we're trying to look at a lot of things to save money. You know, we're refunding a bond that's gonna save us more than we even thought. I think, I don't have final numbers, but about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So, and we're getting, all, a lot of our debt is getting paid off. US twenty-three property will be paid off next fiscal year and that's forty-five thousand dollars. So the money we lose in personal property, at least we'll have a loan paid off, so that'll wash that out. There's things like that and, you know, like the tree planting that we're going to do, 'cause I know, Rich said they took a lot of ash trees down. We have that McClay Trust Fund, all for trees, and there's about ninety-five thousand in there. That doesn't come out of the general fund, so there's lots of good things happening that we're still trying to work on. There's some grants, some small grants, Joel's looking at a COPS grant possibly, the CAR grant from the USDA, Jaws of Life that Bill's looking at, so lots of little grants we're trying to get. So we're still trying to pull a lot of things together too that'll help save us some money before we try to make larger cuts.
Yeah, I couldn't find the number, but I was amazed about the number of grants that were written and that the city received, you know, last year. Phenomenal for all the projects that we were able to get done through the grant writing, so.
And I don't know if the public's aware of it too, but the capital improvement plans and the grants, all that history is in the back of the budget on our website. So www.alpina MI US, all that information is in the budget. So there's a lot of good information if people wanna see what we have accomplished.
Karen, question about the, the water sewer rate study.
That's the next one, I think, too.
Oh, it is?
That will be.
Which will be coming up.
Next item of the year. I don't know what's coming up.
Coming up next.
Thanks, Matt.
Sorry.
I'll hold my question.
Okay, but I would like to say on that, the water and sewer funds, I just, you know, quickly so people understand that too, that is not operated from the tax property, property tax at all, the revenue. That comes through the rates that we pay for those utilities. We did raise them ten percent this year and that money cannot intermingle with the general fund. The sewer fund, we started with about one point five million. We're projected to end it with about seven hundred and eighty-four thousand or twenty-six percent. They don't call it fund balance in the two, and they call them enterprise funds because you are allowed more to charge a rate that pays for that expense. Unlike a miller where you can't just raise it, you have to go to the people, so. The sewer fund's pretty good. The water fund started a year out of eight hundred and seventy-four thousand, which is relatively low, and it's projected to end at four hundred and thirteen thousand, which is quite low. So, you know, one big break takes us a couple hundred thousand to fix those, so. That's why we're trying to get those funds healthy.
Yeah, that Lockwood break that we had here over the winter, that was a hundred and fifty thousand to get that fixed.
Yeah, it's still not, it's still not finished yet.
Okay.
You know, it's not easy to do in the middle of the winter, you don't do this, not because Amy's doing it in the summer.
But they don't break in the summer for some reason.
Generally, yeah.
Mike, Mike mentioned the, the grants and just quickly, you know, as a citizen, you know, I feel a debt of gratitude to staff. If it wasn't for staff aggressively seeking grants and, and securing those grants, we wouldn't have near the improvements we've had in the last five or six years. So, you know, I know I appreciate what you guys put into it and really being able to improve this community on, on the state's dime for the most part. And I, you know, good or bad, I think that's where it's headed even more so, you know, in the future. But I feel confident our staff can, can find us those grants and, and help us improve things, even in a bad economy, so. I know I appreciate it and I think a lot of that credit goes to Greg. Thank you.
I also appreciated the, after the meeting last week or, or before, the cooperative spirit of almost everything the staff does. It's been very important to me to watch that and to see the good things that come from it. So it enhances all our lives, just like, just like money does, the cooperative spirit, pushing forward. We're gonna do good things.
So we need to just table this.
Okay.
Do you have a motion?
Motion to table.
I'll make that motion.
Sexton?
Yes.
Waldorf?
Hi.
Eiler?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes. Thank you very much. Communications and petitions? I'm finished business, water and sewer rate evaluation report.
So now that we talked the staff, oh.
Yeah.
You didn't get it done. At the April fifteenth council meeting, staff had directed us to, to evaluate the rates. And there were a number of suggestions that were made and the target to be advanced in the base six meeting. Since that time, staff has been working on there. We've developed probably eight to ten different spreadsheets that are all intermingled in order to be able to evaluate the impacts of various scenarios on the citizen, both the minimum bill customer and the large volume user. It, it has been going good. It, it's just a balancing act to find out what, what ratios. There's certain fixed costs that we have to deal with. Our debt is a fixed cost that we have to deal with. Our operating maintenance is, is, is a fixed cost as far as having to reimburse the funds for that from our users. It's looking at the other, at the other elements that are ready to serve and the commodity charges that we're, we're playing with and trying to work those out. We were, we're very close to, to coming up with what we feel is a palatable solution. It's not gonna be pretty, but I think we knew that based after the last presentation from Gosling Zubek on the rates, that we were well behind the eight ball. And that's why, that's why it's taken so much time is to try to find something that's workable. So staff met on May first and looked at, looked at what we had as, had developed. And there were a number of questions that arose, some, some issues that came out of it. And we decided at that point in time, it just was not in our best interest to try to rush to get it done, to get something here. So we've continued working on that and we would, we will be able to, we're gonna meet again hopefully this Thursday. I'm still gonna book the meeting, but we'll, we'll meet this Thursday and evaluate it again and, and see if we can get something finalized for the next council meeting. And that is our target, is to have it for the next council meeting.
Which is why we're gonna have a full meeting next, next time. But we were looking at, there may be more than one alternative. There may be three or four options presented. But I do have to give Rich a lot of credit because he did those spreadsheets. And before then, I think we all had kind of an idea of what we're talking about, but we were going at it in, in different directions and, and from different perspectives. And it made it much clearer when I began to finally see what, how all these different factors and variables are interplay with one another. And so it is, it is coming together, but it is taking time. But to me, it's the way we need to do it. We wanna make sure what we give you is the best information possible because you're going to have a difficult decision to make. And we wanna make sure that you have the best information to do that for you. So waiting the additional two weeks, we think is.
Makes sense to me.
And there's no reason we have to actually make the decision that night either.
No, no, I mean, those.
Getting it in your packet Friday and signing it Monday, that's too important.
And we will, if we're ready, we'll try to even, as Karen was saying, if we can get it to you ahead of the normal packet, you know, deliver it Friday, if we can get it earlier in the week so that you have a, a little longer to be able to look at it, that we will try to do that. But no, there is no reason that it absolutely has to be adopted on, on the twentieth. If it's done in June, so be it, or, you know, whatever. The key is to get it, I don't wanna say right, I don't know if there is a right or a wrong, but at least the best and the most acceptable to everybody.
I agree.
And I think even if we decide to, there are a number of aspects on it, going to multiple government, that are going to take some time. So, you know, this may be a situation, and the budget. So, you know, this may be a situation, and the budget is based on, is not based on any of these. I mean, that budget is based on just the 10% increase projections, and it could be something that even, you know, bang the gavel on it in June and say, this is what we decided. It may likely be January 1st before those rates would go into effect. So, there are options.
Can I ask my question now? I'm proud myself of covering it all this time. Karen, you answered a lot of what I was asking in terms of, we'll decide at some time while the next year's budget is in effect, and what effect would it have on next year's budget? I have a philosophical question, that's probably an easily debunked one from your, from your perspective, but I think we have about $21 million worth of sewer and water projects in the CIP for the next six years. Couple of them aren't huge, like the $3 million one and whatever. Would there be any advantage in terms of easing the pain to the water user if we accumulated three or four or five of the big ones, say, on whatever it is, 12 million, 15 million, and bonded just those, and then the rest of the 7 million or whatever would be added to the water bill or whatever to gradually phase in? We'd still have to pay the bond off, though, with water and user fees. Is there, is there any advantage in doing that, or is that just another layer of interest we have to pay and lay on the users?
I mean, we may have to bond.
We could look at that, I mean, it's easy enough with the, with the spreadsheets that I've got built. If we look at that, and Karen can provide us with an estimate of what that bond repayment is, we can plug that in and see what that impact does to the rates, as far as the debt portion of that rate.
Because that's what we were trying to build into the rates over the years, is how much do we need, I don't remember how much capital, were we trying to do a million a year in capital?
I think, right in the past or for the future?
Future.
In the future, we're targeting about 1.5 million between the two funds, as a target.
And that's not enough, obviously.
To start with, and then build it up over time.
But to be able to say that that, all of the, all of that increase, or all of that everybody's paying is going towards something structural, rather than, rather than interest is, is something to say. So, I would suppose that, I mean, I, you'd find support for me for something that, that was a project that was going to add value or to the system. So, so it would be a savings in the long run, that kind of thing. I don't know if any of your projects really inhibit it.
And we realize, there's some, there's no way that we can afford without bonding. If we have to put a new water tank in, you know, 10 years down the road.
Right.
Or if we have to extend the intake, or if we have to put a new filter bed in for whatever reason, those are things that we would, we would likely have to bond, but those are items that have a 50, 60-year life, so that we have the ability, once it's paid off, that we've got a good asset to last us.
Yeah, normally you don't bond, I think, 25 years, maybe approximately in that area. You're talking maybe a $400,000 payment, so we, I think we probably would have to do both, but the rates are what we need to cover both. The capital projects, we can, you know, a million maybe we could do now, but also the bond of the larger projects.
That's part of the philosophy is, you know, the 3.5 million that they projected that we needed, to take and expect the citizens to go from where we are now to paying 3.5 billion dollars for, is not realistic to the citizens. And that's why we're looking at something less and striving towards it, so.
And that SRF and DWRF, the loans from the state, we just spent over 7 million on those projects, you know, trying to get some of that done, that was a large chunk of projects, but still didn't make a dent on the 20-some million that we need to do.
Those are, I mean, those are all options for us to explore.
Appreciate the work you have done and will do, because I didn't even know how to phrase the question, but you seem to understand it, so I appreciate it. Thanks, sir.
All right? No, there's no action on that update. Last on the list, New Business Resolution 2013-08, a resolution approving the application to Michigan Department of Transportation for local bridge program funding.
This, this is a project, right now, as council's aware, we cannot get insurance on our second-hand bridge, and for a number of reasons. But we are looking at having, doing rehab on that. The last time that bridge was rehabbed was in 1988, and there was a number of improvements done. Since that time, we have undertaken a number of mechanical and electrical improvements on our own, but it's a situation where the bridge is due for a major rehabilitation. The city has contracted with Huron Engineering, formerly Wilcox, to prepare and submit an application, which they have done. That deadline was May 1st, they have those in. So, it has been submitted with the proviso that if council, if council does approve this resolution, we will submit it. If council elects not to, then we will withdraw it. But this is a grant program through the state's critical bridge program. The city of Alpena would be responsible for 5% of the construction cost and 100% of the engineering cost for the project. Construction cost of capital preventative maintenance is estimated at $2.2 million The city, 5% of that, would be responsible for $114,850. We've also estimated the engineering portion of the project at 10% of the construction cost. That, that's a ballpark at this point in time. As we get closer, we can refine that number, but in either case, that is 100% fundable by the city. We've estimated that at $230,000. Thus, if approved, the city would be responsible and have to fund $344,850. Funding application is for 2016, so that would allow us several years in which to bankroll the funds to be able to undertake that project, to have that 344, probably $345,000 available. I've got a resolution number 2013-8 for city council approval and submitted to the Michigan Department of Transportation.
I've got a question for you, Rich.
Sure.
The $230,000 in engineering cost, that's all internal engineering cost, or is that, are we outsourcing engineering to?
We, that, a project like that, we would have to outsource. There's, there's expertise in the mechanics and the electronics of that bridge, that I'd like to say we could do it, but we wouldn't do anything else for three years. So, it's just not cost-effective for us to do. So, we would, yes, we would do at least contract it.
And this is a grant, this is a grant application to the state. I was going to ask about the Bagley Street Bridge at the same time, because sometimes we'll be, we'll talk about a grant, and we'll submit a grant, and then after, we'll, you know, at the last minute, somebody else say, you know, we could have added this, or we should have added that. Do the, either of them tie into, first of all, is the Bagley Street Bridge, the city?
No, it's ours. And actually, Alpena County Road Commission, it has submitted an application...
I thought I read that they did.
For 2016 funding for their bridge. I sit on the Michigan Department of Transportation's Northern Regional Bridge Committee, so I evaluate all the bridge applications that come in for all of Northern Michigan. The city's, or that bridge committee, we have only, we have a very limited pot, there's about 3.5 million dollars in that pot for Northern Michigan bridges. Not a lot of money, but if a bridge application exceeds 50% of our funding allotment at the local level, or is a movable bridge, which ours is, it automatically gets kicked up to the state bridge committee. So, in this case, I would not, I'm not going to be reviewing our application. We would, at the local level, at the M.D. North Regional Committee, we would recommend that to the state bridge committee for their consideration. But there's, there's very limited movable bridges in and throughout the state, because of their complexity and the cost that's associated with them, is why they're maintained at the state level. So, the Bagley Street Bridge, we would consider at the local level, depending on the cost of it. And if not, it would also, if it was above our threshold, it would get referred up, so they're really not in competition with each other, I guess is the bottom line where I was getting at.
But they're not combinable in any way?
No, no, each structure is looked at independently.
Okay, that was on the head.
Move the approval of resolution number 2013 down shortly.
A second.
Waldor?
Aye.
Eiler?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes. I'm not returning.
You're watching All About Alpena.